...contracted this past Friday has been ongoing potentially since last January. Who had Parker and Nager asked EPA and DOH to investigate this fallout then? Just like people last week asked the EPA, the DOH, and the Coast Guard to also come and conduct water quality tests. To my knowledge none of this has been done. The direct chemical dumping goes beyond issues initially raised to prompt this period. It adds to the problems long recognized with this power plant, including that there has been done environmental impact statement required by Huonua and that it is not a credit is clearly not a clean energy in the first place. That state agencies are not requiring an impact statement while potentially allowing them to emit chemicals into the water table and ocean is irresponsible and contemptible. Chemicals being emitted include amine, oxygen scavenger, anti-scale polymer, anti-scale phosphate, magnesium, disparate, and citric nitrate. The amount of citric nitrate that is being dumped per my limited investigation so far is 7,000 gallons a day. If this has been going on for the past year, that's 2.5 million gallons in the last year. The impacts of this particular chemical on the body is diarrhea, GI problems, convulsions, et cetera. The only explanation we have given regarding the impact of these emissions, deliberate emissions, is that it is non-hazardous and neutralized. These plants are unsubstantiated. There has been no studies conducted to determine their impact. No permits should be given without full disclosure of the operations and the environmental impact. My children, we go to the beach every day. We spend hours a day in the beach. All the Okinawa community that I teach are surfers. They were never surf champions. And they should not be subject to this in Hawaii. These permits should not be allowed.
Mark Popovich will be followed by Sunny Kelly, who is going to be followed by Peter Christensen.
Hello, everybody. I live in the Mauna Kea on the wonderful Haamakuakou coast. I want to put on the record that I oppose the permits and I want an environmental impact statement. I want to talk about a few things that have not really been discussed. Who is behind this project? None of us said we want a eucalyptus burning plant on our coast. Whose idea was it? I have no idea. I have heard that is a billionaire who lives in California, the Bay Area, called Jennifer Johnson. She is the daughter of founder of Temples and Funds and supposedly a good person and environmentalist. I don't know. I looked her up online. I think we found nothing. She supposedly is providing money. I don't know. This company is called HHD LLC. I assume most of you know what means Limited Liability Company. It means there are other people. That's a way of hiding your identity. Who are the other measures? Maybe it's just Jennifer Johnson. Maybe it's other people. I think we should know. I think in this case, we could be fairly sure it's not the Russians laundering money. Do the people, because maybe somebody else is. Do any of these people have bank accounts in the Cayman Islands? We don't know. And they don't have to tell us. You can find out the names and then you find a lawyer's office. I think if this, if we have time, we should find out, at least find out where the offices are. The other major player is the Bishop Estate. Who's trees are these? They were told in around 2000, I don't know the exact year, don't plant those stupid worthless trees. They're being used. Hope that's what you planned? We could have planted in Ko'oa. Steve, fabulous hardwoods that would provide for the Hawaiian culture, jobs for people, really worthwhile trees, native trees, bring back the native environment. I decided eucalyptus trees. I asked one of them once, what did you think we were doing? We wanted to bring back the land quickly. I've since learned that eucalyptus trees are terrible for the soil. So there they sit, doing nothing. The Bishop Estate needs to get rid of them. I'm not putting any blame on any particular person, because I don't know. But it seems to me that that's why this plant is there, to get rid of their eucalyptus tree. The Bishop Estate is worth, Bishop Estate is worth way over $10 billion. Look it up. I didn't make this up. They're one of the wealthiest private funds in the world. They do not need extra money. You can say, what are you doing with eucalyptus trees? That's their problem. They put it there when they were told not to let them figure out a solution. If you talk to them, they say, we're working on turning it into more native things, more productive things. Then do it with the $10 billion. I want to also say that I feel for the workers. Not too many people mention, these are good people. They want jobs. I hope they admire them. I mean, all know how hard it is to make a decent living. I hope they are making a decent living. I think they, they're not stupid people. They're great people. I think they have been lied to. I talked to a few of them and I said, this is the line you see from Huonua. It's carbon neutral. It can't possibly be carbon neutral. It's burning something. C plus O two, CO two. Forget about the tree. It's not carbon neutral. Global warming is a very serious problem. We should not be adding any CO two. I want to thank these wonderful workers to get jobs of the future. If they wanted an energy that's wind, that's solar, they're good jobs, they will last for a long time. This, as somebody right here said, this is 30,000 year old technology. Our ancient ancestors chopped down a tree and burned them. Yeah, sure. So I feel that, I want to, what this has led to, and this is my talking to people. They do not trust DOH. They do not trust our elected officials. And when I say, what do you think is going on? I have to try and play people. Everybody goes like this. What this plant has done is ruined the trust of all of us in our elected officials. I'm not saying anybody's being bribed, but that's what so many people I talk to say, that this literally involves public officials being bribed or they never support something like this. So I'm against it and I want good jobs for all these wonderful workers.
Hey, how's it, everybody? People who are still here, true or not. Right on. Well, I just want to start by saying I respect all you guys a lot, you know? It's like, you know, it's okay for people to have differences of opinion, yeah? It's all good like that. In fact, I respect people more that have, I think, you know, than people that are just like, blah, I don't care, I don't care. Anyway, so sorry, I'm gonna start real quick, I don't know if it's time. Alright, as a concern resident of Haamakuakou coast, I feel this power plant is completely illogical because, I mean, a photovoltaic system would be, you know, literally giving people electricity for half the price of what it is now. So, okay, so, you know, yeah, there's a lot of infrastructure in there already, but, you know, you just switch, a lot of the transfer station, all that, it's probably usable with a, you know, a solar farm. You could just still use it, you know, and just turn that into a solar farm because there's a lot of sun there. And it would work great. And the whole community would be behind it. You know, there's really no reason why not to, as far as I can tell. And you guys can be the hero, says whatever's going on here. So, five logging trucks an hour, six maybe? I don't know. It's a lot, you know, it's not, you know, they're oversized logging trucks from what they say too, like massive ones. I mean, what I'm saying about that is, I know it's a safety issue, as the one woman pointed out. I mean, we don't want that, you know, it's a big safety issue. And the toxins in the air, I mean, I talked about that already, cause cancer, we don't get more cancer. Chemicals using the injection well is going straight into the ocean. You know, the aquifer moves like an underground river from the mountain to the ocean. And so all those chemicals will make it into the ocean. And the heated, chemical laden water will adverse the impact brief and all marine life. And of course fishermen and surfers and toxins will permeate the entire island, the left one around our homes, causing numerous health issues in humans and animals. So thanks, you know, for this meeting, but you guys, you know, whoever put it on, you know, you kind of wasted a lot of time during the questions and answers, you know, and you weren't even really answering our questions like fully, you know? I feel like there was a lot of, you know, avoidance going on. So it kind of shows how you, you know, how they plan to operate on Huonua, you know, they kind of stole the name, it seems to me, because it's a Hawaiian name and, you know, it implies some stuff, but, but, you know, they, it feels like we got avoided and it feels like with this spill that happened, you know, there's, this is how Huonua plans to operate, you know, and not be straight up, you know, not be transparent. So I need to, I just want to call for a key environmental impact statement. We have a contested case hearing. We need a, you know, if they're going to get permits, you know, the UIC, the MPDS, whatever, all that needs to be gone through. And you can't leave any stone unturned. The, I think we should give back the land to the Hawaiians and to the other people who want to grow food. Well, you know, the eucalyptus land has been, has been, you know, it's been, obviously the trees are not good, you know, it's good, the best farm in the world, okay? So we need to give it back. And yeah, commandment schools, Parker Ranch, whoever owns it, I don't care, just give it back to the Hawaiians, the people who want to grow food. Yeah, okay, 10 seconds, go, go. You know, I just think, we go straight to the end. You guys are, there's a gravity light, you know? So one guy asked me, how do you think of dealing with the battery? And batteries are toxic, right? So if you had a solar farm, how are you going to deal with the battery? Well, there's a lot of technology out there with batteries these days that's way better, including, you know, you can lift up weights in a tower. And then, you know, when you have the electricity flowing in, and then at nighttime when there's no PP, you can drop the weights and turn the generators to make more electricity. There's a lot of ways to do this stuff. We don't need to rely on this old technology. And anyways, thanks very much, everybody. I got to go now.
Peter Christensen followed by Christopher Dean followed by Mary True. At this point, we have 33 more speakers in 44 more minutes. Obviously, we're not going to get all 33 speakers on. I was handed a note earlier by folks who thought that even the Monday morning of next week was, was not enough time to view new information that's come out, in particular with, people wanted to think more about the spill. So what I will do is rather than have the commentary end on Monday morning at 8:00 each, next Monday, it'll be Wednesday of next week at 5:00 PM. And that will give an opportunity to everybody who doesn't get a chance to speak today, to put what you have in writing and turn it in within that time. I have the authority to do that. I don't have the authority to follow any of that, so. Okay. Well, we're now at the 36th, 44 minutes. Okay, Christopher Dean, Mary True, Corey Hurry.
Corey spoke already.
Christopher.
Christopher Dean, Mary True, Deborah Ward.
Thank you. Christopher Dean, I am also a state delegate and for the Democratic Party and also on the environmental caucus. However, I'm just speaking for myself today. I think it's ironic that right outside of this door, there's a video panel that displays how pumping carbon into the atmosphere is destroying our atmosphere. And then there's climate deniers in here who are denying the science behind that, the scientific community in this building that has constructed this building has a video monitor out there explaining exactly how humans are destroying our planet. However, I'd like to say that I've been in touch with Bill McKibben over the last few years. And I've been studying global warming for a couple of decades now. And he has given me a statement that I'm going to submit as written testimony. But as a synopsis, I would like to point out that this is not a carbon neutral facility. Because you're going to release a mass amount of carbon all at once in a short period of time. But the trees are going to take like 20 years or more to reach, to suck that carbon back out of the atmosphere. Well, if you don't know, we don't have 20 years. And that would only be carbon neutral if they burn all these trees and then stop burning trees for 20 years and let the trees regrow. So they're either going to just burn all these trees and then go out of business, or they're going to continue to burn trees, which will just be pumping more carbon into the atmosphere. So I have a picture here that I drew about the radiant heat. They're going to eject this water into the ground that's going to be heated. And as you can see, if you know about homes on the mainland who are in cold environments, a popular way to heat your home is to radiant heat. And you put these hot water in your concrete slab. And that is an efficient way to heat your slab and your entire home. And so what happens when you inject hot water into the ground is you heat the rock surrounding the injection well. That means that the subsequent water being injected into the ground will not be cooled down. The hot water, the hot water will definitely permeate the porous lava rock and enter the ocean rather quickly. And it'll be heated and maintain this high temperature all the way until it gets into the ocean. My son is a scientist who graduated from UH ELO in Ocean Science. He worked for the DAR and he measures the destruction of our coral reefs. Three years ago, we had high temperatures, it was 90 degrees almost every day for August and September. During those two months, an increase of temperature to that level for two months resulted in the death of 50% of Hawaii's coral reefs in just two months. And that was a minuscule increase in global temperature just for a little while. So we're going to be dealing with this. This is going to happen. And Huonua is going to contribute to that. And as the IPCC panel has pointed out, a 1.5 degree increase in global temperature will kill 70% of the world's coral reefs. A 2 degree increase will wipe out all coral reefs on this plant. And that is going to happen within the next two decades, for sure. So we better brace ourselves because we are going to wreak what we have sowed. And what we need to have is a full-on emergency effort to reverse the damage that we've done. This is a long-term project that the World Health Act, that the planet has never seen. The largest extinction event that's happened 65 million years is underway. Animal species are going extinct and are running faster now than after the meteor hit 65 million years ago. But that wasn't the biggest extinction event. The biggest extinction event that happened was from global warming. It was from increased carbon in the atmosphere. And that was due to massive volcanic activity 250 million years ago. It wiped out all land on Earth except for microbes.
You please mention.
Okay. Venus is hotter than Mercury, even though Mercury is millions of miles closer to the Sun. You know why? Because Venus's atmosphere is saturated with carbon. That's where we're headed.
Mary True, David Ward, Jeanne Thomas Shiro.
Hi. Hi. I'm Mary True and I live in a large old Kualimana neighborhood which was built in the 70s now, Malca where Huonua Plant is located in Pepe Kao. I've lived on island 13 years and have lived in my home for nine. My boyfriend and I take three foot walks along the cliffs because at 70, our doctors are telling us to get more exercise. My boyfriend will occasionally fish at the public beach access area right below the plant. It was with great sadness that we saw them cut down the trees in Mahala right to the edge and below about a year ago. We watched the trees and debris churn below the plant against the shoreline for over a week. Water that was clear enough to see the rocks below the surface was mud red for a very long time. It is still frequently red as the bank has been eroding ever since the trees were cut down. Last weekend, we were sitting on the pally north of the plant watching the Eo, Ina pigeons who nest in the cliffs below. We were probably almost half a mile north of the plant as the crow flies and we were surprised at how noisy the plant was. And I don't know why it was running, but boy, you could hear it. It was actually drowning out the sound of the waves. We feel really sorry for the people who live in the homes near the plant. One of the major concerns is the air and water quality. Our neighborhood, one of the largest on the Haamakuakou coast, is full of pekine and papuna and we are directly downwind from this plant. What will the long-term effects be on our health? What is going to happen to our air and our water quality? Our source of water is not that far from the plant where they are planning on injecting chemicals into the ground. My biggest concern though is probably the logging trucks. And that will affect everyone on the Haamakuakou coast. They are estimating that probably five to six an hour will be traveling along our beautiful shoreline. I lived in the mountains of North Carolina for 35 years and I know what these trucks will do. Our roads will be less safe and will deteriorate faster than they already are. I know that's hard to believe. The roads will be slick with mud and spots and there will be fatalities. You have logging trucks, there are going to be fatalities. Already, it is more dangerous to drive down to the coast and beach access on Sugar Mill Road. Some of their workers are not inspectors of the law. They run subsonic speed and pass in dangerous conditions. The neighborhood is already a less pleasant and more dangerous place to live. What will it be like when the plant is operating at full capacity? Mahala, for this opportunity to speak my truth and thank you for taking the confidence.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm Deborah Ward, Jeanne Thomas Shiro, Donald Wessels, Susan Basit, and then Andrew Campbell.
Hello, Haamakuakou. My name's Deborah Ward. I lived through the good old days when corn sugar was powering the top of my house with parapet. And I lived in the middle of a sugar cane field being burned on all the, all sides. And I became a cancer 15 years after I started living in that house. I am a BS in Masters in Science from University of Hawaii in Iowa. And I'm Chair of Sierra Club Local Order this year. The Sierra Club Local Order represents over 100,000 members on the island of Hawaii and we regularly use the coastline, particularly Pepe Kao cliffs and the shoreline with four miles of public access trails along the coastline for recreation, scientific pursuit, enjoying gathering your shore resources. The recreational and subsistence use of marine waters at Pepe Kao are exceptional and have long history, even during Shura plantation days because fishing access was granted to everyone. And the tradition was extended through establishment of over four and a half miles of dedicated public shoreline trails on both sides of the power plant. Several of our members live in Pepe Kao community affected by the Huonua proposed bioenergy facility. I'm going to shorten my 12 pages to very briefly, but for these reasons, we're a trial and formal complaint and request for a contested case hearing on the matter about the permits. We heard today that the, the analysis of the geology was a model and we also heard that it will eventually, the waters will eventually reach the ocean. And for this reason, the Clean Water Act needs to be invoked and for that, there needs to be an EIS and PDES rather than underground projection control permit. And I'm going to try and reach to this. But if the Department of Health does not require an PDES permit, it should be, should plan for a scenario where an active permit is required and Huonua should post bond to cover the steep fines of not having a permit. The cost for meeting the permit requirements and the cost for closing the plant if they never pursue one. We don't want a repeat of the truly geothermal debacle hazardous abandoned plant that the taxpayers end up having to pay for. Cut right to the end so everybody else can talk. And relief that was requested by Sierra Club is that the State Department of Health take the following actions. Require an PDES permit to operate the wells and stormwater dependent PDES permit include enforceable conditions that protect the environment with independent monitoring beyond that provided by the applicant. Thank you. And I sign this for this chair, conservation chair, and high leaders of the Sierra Club. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeanne Thomas Shiro. I was born on Oahu. Mom and dad grew up there on the Haamakuakou coast, O'Kau, O'Kau. I moved here to Big Island 11 years ago. It's so sad to see the division that has been created. Who has, what has created that division? The government. What is the government? The government, from what I've learned, is subsidizing this project. So you guys who are good workers, who want to work and support your families, you can get a job. The government is subsidizing this. Why is there no EIS? Why are so many of these practical, common sense, environmental protection rules and regulations being neglected by the government? Ladies and gentlemen, maybe some of you know this already and you can certainly look it up yourself. The United States Code, Article 28, Section 3002, Line 15 clarifies for the world to see, and it takes you only a couple minutes to check this out. What is the definition of the United States? It's a federal corporation, okay? State of Hawaii is a corporation with its own Dunning Bradstreet number. Why does the government act like a corporation? Because ladies and gentlemen, that's exactly what it is. You do not have a disjour government. And this corporation invaded Hawaii after it had become a federal corporation in 1871 with the creation of the District of Columbia. 22 years later, they arrested our queen. And all that lineup and all the water and all the air, the meats and bonds of Hawaiian Kingdom continues to today. Now, I ran for mayor as a natural Ma'ha Hawaiian and I asked, when we were running for mayor, 12 other guys, men and women, running for office. And I ask you all today, right now, if you have And I ask you all today, right now, if you have evidence that the state of Hawaii is actually lawful in Hawaii, raise your hand. Raise your hand if you have evidence, because everybody knows. So if we know the truth and we don't act on it, we are in dishonor. And if we are in dishonor, then we have broken the covenant with Ke'akua. If we break the covenant with Ke'akua, how can he reward us? How can he answer our prayers the way we deserve as children of Ke'akua? So I'm not here to petition. I'm not here to request anything of the corporation. I'm here to demand something. 'Cause I'm a sovereign Hawaiian national in my own country, and I'm lawful in my own country. I have unalienable rights, and we did establish a common law or natural law grand jury on this island and on Oahu. What gives us that authority? Because you have unalienable rights to full disclosure and substantive due process. And that is exactly what the corporation will not give you until you clarify your status, who you are, where you are, and what is the law. So I got the law here, and I just put it in handwriting. And I heard Warren Lee is here. See you? Aloha. Thank you. I look forward to talking, starting with you about the law. And sir, I'm gonna give you this, and goes also to the state of Hawaii employees and agents thereof, who are Warren Lee and the Department of Health, agent and employees thereof. From the Circle of Sovereigns, a Hawaiian Kingdom natural law grand jury, you are required, sir, to provide the document that you rely on that proves your claim of jurisdiction and title. If you don't have title, you certainly don't have jurisdiction. You have twenty days, sir. Today is eleven-fourteen-eighteen. I have a roomful of people to verify this. You can send your proof of your claim to Circle of Sovereigns, P'ke'akia Street. God bless you.
I didn't create one of this, but you announced the company.
I'll let that go. You've been default already. Okay. You took it. You guys saw that. We're gonna work this out. We can work this out because this is the aloha nation. And all that corporate law, we was all born into that. We was born into that. And we have the people with the knowledge, the wisdom, the scientific background, and the aloha to make sure your family's gonna be safe, and we all gonna be okay. Don't let this false paradigm separate us anymore. Okay, you guys? God bless you all.
(Applause).
Here we go again. Another assault that by an industrial facility allowed to dump poisons for tax breaks and profits. This is at the heart of the perversion within our body, our environment. We do it over and over again. The sole value of our republic concerns itself with taxes and profits. Let's be honest, land, air, and water are really not the priority in the way we govern our society. Air, land, air, and water are seen as having no real values unless it is being counted in dollars sent to somebody's bank account. When are we gonna stop sacrificing our land, air, and water to the poisonous consequences of the myopic pursuit of so-called economic growth? The earth is dying dead from our society's long and unrelenting procession of environmental insults. Little by little, we are killing the foundation of our creative ecology. When the land and sea dies, we and our children die. Hu'ho'ua represents another example of the continued assault of Hawaii island's living ecology. Like any other business, Hu'ho'ua wants to maximize their profits and externalize their costs. If this project goes forward, the people of Hawaii island will pay the poisonous cost of Hu'ho'ua. And Hu'ho'ua will collect what they want the most, tax breaks and profits. And we will not, we cannot quit up with this insult to our health and children's future, stop Hu'ho'ua. Thank you.
(Applause).
I'm Susan Bassett, and I live near Pepekeo. I am about point and a half miles downwind from the plant. I don't come to you because I live so close to the plant. I come to you because I want to talk about global warming and what its effect will be. You know, their application to Department of Health showed two-hundred-and-fifty-million tons of CO2 emitted per year under their design capacity. That's an enormous amount of CO2. It is more greenhouse gas than any other power plant on the Hawaii island. And it's emitting, it would emit at a rate four times more than a coal plant would. I know this because I'm a California engineer, and I spent many decades working as an air quality expert, doing emission inventories of greenhouse gases and other pollutants. So that's a major problem. I am requesting that this plant do an environmental impact statement to address climate change and all other impacts to the environment. The other thing that I would like to say, specifically with regard to the PDES permit and the underground injection control wells, is that there is, by basic logic, probably a hydrologic connection between the wells and the ocean because you have talked about brackish wells where it's the water from. If they're brackish, that means they have salt water, and salt water comes from the ocean. So at some point in time, and probably now, there is water flowing between the ocean and the location of those wells. What I ask specifically from Hu'ho'ua is that you be honest with the people who live near your plant, the people of Hawaii and the people of the world. Please tell us what is really happening, because when you try to mislead us, then we lose trust in you. We all know that every action we take affects our environment. Each and every one of us affects our environment. Please be honest with us. And please know that planting twenty-one trees to replace twenty trees that you burn does not solve the climate change problem. To solve that problem, to be carbon neutral, and you know, I wasn't even active in this issue until I saw that you were claiming carbon neutrality on your website. If you're gonna be carbon neutral, you need to be planting the same amount of weight of trees, seedlings, that you are burning in any given year. That's realistic. Please come up with a plan that you will support, that you will report on, and that you will, you know, recognize enforcement for, to actually make your plant carbon neutral. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Campbell, followed by Bill Weedy, followed by Walt Dudley.
Aloha. Thanks for letting me speak today. It's a lot of passionate conversation, and I'm learning a lot. You know, I do a lot of projects and program management around the world, actually, and some basic tenants of program project management have not been followed, and I would appreciate if they were. I think it would give a lot of people a lot more information. Just going back, what alternatives were ever considered, you know, by the county, et cetera, the state for this project? That's one of the basic things. And maybe we presented a long time ago, I'm not familiar, but what other business cases were provided? If there were business cases, now's the time, you wanna understand. Let's update those business cases and make sure that this is, in fact, the best option for the community. Woodburne Plant, I think, for it enough today. For me, that's going backwards. I look forward, you know, to the keke. They could learn some different skills with the more progressive technologies. I wanna say, if you go out to different parts of the world, make seventy dollars an hour instead of fifteen dollars an hour, that I think the skill sets here would produce. Public-private partnership. Earlier today, I don't think HELO is in attendance, but they're the public part of this partnership. Who were they? I mean, this is part of the EPP, they call them. Let's get that part going. Carbon neutral, as we've talked about many times. I've heard this. I said, well, what I'd like to know is, how can I get a copy? How can we get a copy of the study that was completed that shows that this is carbon neutral? If this could be answered and posted on the website, I think that would really benefit a lot of people. Department of Health, I do have a great esteem, more esteem now because they're hosting this. I really appreciate it. EPA, again, while their permission is not required, can we ask for it? Other people have talked about the same thing. Hu'ho'ua know a website. I looked on it this morning, and I saw the presentation this morning. The information that was presented today on the slides, I looked at pretty quickly, were markedly different than what's on the website. My thinking, as a program management expert, if you can't keep the website up to date and for things that are in your favor, what's gonna happen when there's adverse effects? How can you communicate back to the stakeholders of community? Also, on the risk management, we talked about, well, we're gonna sample the different things. That's the first part of a risk management plan. But what's not been addressed, and maybe Mads, I haven't seen it, but there's so many other components to a risk management plan. You're just identifying the risk. What are the triggers to trigger contingency plan? What are the, how do you track the issues? There's so many different things. The financial benefit. Bottom line is, I could talk a lot longer, but the basic tenants of program and project management have not been followed, and that's creating huge risk. I can talk, I mean, so many people much more eloquent than me about their passion, about the Ina and everything. I'm just trying to give you a little, a little look at some of the program management items that I would expect from a project of this magnitude. Finally, just wanna know how I can be more informed. I heard about this in the last few days, many people have. At such a, for such a big project, this should be articulated, communicated, and well-known in the community in all respects. Why is that not happening? Why hasn't happened? There's very few people, the one woman here, eleven years she knew about it. Most people didn't even know about it for eleven days. I think I'm pretty well-informed. I think a lot of people are, but we're not hearing about it. So what this shows to me is a lack of transparency, potential lack of integrity, and I think these several Hu'ho'ua know a lot better. The information will make public, and you guys don't have it. It's not you guys. It is senior leadership, and I'll call them out, and the owners. There's a lot more information that needs to be made public so we can make an informed decision after the community. Aloha.
(Applause). It's now approximately, it's now approximately four-fifteen. We have twenty-five speakers, a couple more. We have been, when I was over that direction, we haven't been able to get the room for another till five o'clock, but we do need to sort of start clearing out around four-fifteen because we do need to get stuff cleared out. So you have about thirty-five more minutes. Twenty-five speakers, thirty-five minutes. So please do your best to keep it short and make your main points. And everybody, again, you don't have the right, I guess. Now, it went down next Wednesday at five o'clock to put everything you mentioned right, to be direct. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
My name's Bill Weedy. I'm here on behalf of Hu'ho'ua. Almost everything I was gonna say has already been said, and so I'm gonna respect the direction of the moderator and turn it over in a written testimony. Thank you. (Applause). Yes, Walt Dudley, Stephen Mahoney, Mark Smith, Paul. Walt Dudley. Stephen Mahoney, followed by Mark Smith, followed by Paul Dudley.
Hello, my name is Stephen Mahoney. Right on Sugar Mill Road, about a half mile from the power plant. So I do get the facts of the traffic, the white pollution at night, the noise. I understand a lot of construction. I also suffer some trash. So names calling, because I testified at other hearings. Political science ripped out my fence. So the same, and let's try to be good neighbors. I understand this is probably gonna go through. I understand, though, that we heard this morning, just now, today, doing offshore surveys in the LNR. We didn't hear what kind of follow-up surveys they'll be or when. It will be after the fact that the poison's dumped into the ocean, and then what will happen when they do find this. So I'm keeping short, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And then Paul Dudley.
Well, everybody's probably noticed who I am, and you'd probably be surprised, but I was at the beach today swimming, and I saw this wire on the wall at the beach, and I saw it, so I thought, maybe I should go see it. It's today, it's my brother's birthday, November fourteenth. So I was gonna come here, and I started driving home because I forgot. I was dragging my stuff, top of the stair, driving up, and I forgot. But it was here, and I actually turned around on the highway, all the way up to Business Drive, and came back. Why? Because a lot of people don't know my name, but I'm the son of the man who built the KEK. My father built the IRTEA in nineteen-seventy-six for NASA, all right? He also built the KEK telescope in nineteen-eighty-eight for NASA. He had to left the project, and then came back to the project. My dad received a NASA Extinction Series Medal in nineteen-ninety-six by Walter Cronkite. You know what? My dad's eighty-seven years old. I was with my dad yesterday in Kahala Ranch for breakfast. You know what we talked about? The TMG project. And I thought to myself, I didn't know about this thing nine years ago when I got back to the island, that there was a rift going on. And I thought to myself, what the hell's going on? And I found out, and my dad, I heard it through the grapevine of the news, that they have this problem with compensating. And you know what my dad said yesterday? He said, they're gonna not, they're still having a problem. I said, no, they're gonna get, because they're giving them something for us. You know what my dad said? Yeah, well, we got it for a dollar a year. My dad said this. He's eighty-seven years old. He said, we got it for a dollar a year. I wanted to pop him in the mouth. He goes, my eighty-seven-year-old dad doesn't understand the consequence of what he was getting for a dollar a year. That's when I began to realize that this man is a genius. He has a hundred-and-forty IQ, okay? He is one of the smartest I know of the world, and he can't be a real jerk, but he's also brilliant. And I realized that it's not the intelligence we're dealing with, it's the emotional orientation people have, the arrogance, the greed, the selfishness, that they will allow something so unimportant to take precedence over something so valuable, all right? When this happened, this just happened yesterday, all right? And I knew at that moment, my dad said that, I thought to myself, this is, this is really the heart of the plant. This is the heart of the plant. How many people remember when the GeoGuru plant almost suffered an infiltration three months ago, okay? Do you know that came within a day of infiltration? In order for infiltration, we couldn't have represented. Okay, do you understand? I don't. It could have been an explosion, it could have been a chain reaction explosion, if water went down into those, into those pipes, nobody really, as far as I understand, knows the whole set of consequences. Yet they built this project, and they're doing it again. These people are hell. These people failed to grasp implications of their actions, and I don't know who the owners are, and I don't know why the health departments failed to their obligation to keep this place safe, but they have. And I'm not allowing them to walk away and feel it and do this, okay? They just okayed these new vaccinations for kids yesterday, and shoved it down the news pipe, and then they tell us, well, that's just the way it is. Well, it isn't the way it is. We decide the way it is, all right? Three minutes ago, GMO studies on Hawaii came out.
Can you please finish it?
A whole research paper, a whole research paper, all right? I didn't read the research paper until I saw the news broadcast on KITV, KJMD, and KHOL saying, it's okay on Hawaii, everything's doing okay, no problem. They're just gonna study it. And I thought, that's not wrong. I went and read the research paper, okay? I'm a behavior specialist. I went and read the research paper, and I realized what they really said was, the brand words are not typed. They don't have enough checks and balances in place to get the evidence to actually find out what the health care is. That's what they said. I called a, I called a KITV to talk to Mike Carroll, the news reporter. You know what? He wasn't there, so I talked to one of his producers. You know what she told me when I said this? She said, we're all doing it. She said, we're all doing it. You're all, you're conspiring. You're lying to us. You're all, you're conspiring, you're lying to us, and you're conspiring to give them a false story about something that's happening to their children. That's what I heard. And she, she didn't even seem to grasp the implications of what she told me. I almost thought, I can't. But I'm saying, your news media is lying to you, they're playing the hole, covering this up, like this is all about. Go to the owners, go to the health department because they are the real source. These guys out here are just workers, they're not, they're being used, they're being used just like you're being hypnotized. That's like Thomas Shiro said, you guys are getting set against each other. When in reality, it's the health department and it's the owners that are doing this and you have to fight and report. You have to, or they're gonna do it to you. They're gonna, you know what infiltration means?
Can you please finish out this?
Once something's infiltrated, it's infiltrated. You don't get it back. It's finished. You ever have an infiltration in your arm from a blood formation? Try it sometimes. And you do it to the ground and you do it to the land, the water source is gonna be destroyed, alright? This is not small affair. If you're trying to run around the health department or around EPA or around environmental access.
It's shocking.
It's shocking. This is a war because these people are raging.
Do you raise your voice, Bishop?
I am.
Thank you.
What I say was, this is, this is a war. You people have to be prepared to fight because this isn't about, oh, well, maybe it's not so bad. No, this, they know what they're doing, not to you foreigners, I'm not pointing towards you, I'm pointing to the management, the top, the health department who's getting these. Some kind of payoff, some kind of payoff, because they would not allow these people to do these things for the benefit of the service. Like Hawaii, that's, that's how I feel, that's what I experience, that's what I know and I'm telling you that's true.